I'll call to order Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, Town Council meeting to order at 6:32. Clerk McCauser for the roll call.
Can you hear us?
Um, I don't know if they can hear online. I'll do the roll call. Um, councilors present are Councilor Gieske, Franco, Jones, Melendez, Jacom, and Parker. That is a quorum of six. Would everyone please rise for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, I'm sorry, but there's no sound on Zoom.
Can you hear now?
Yes, I can hear now.
Thank you. Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. I'll read a proclamation recognizing Jeffrey B. Post, whereas Jeffrey Post was a dedicated firefighter, emergency medical technician, and hazmat, and rescue expert. And whereas Jeffrey Post served honorably with the Navy Naval Submarine Base New London Fire Department since 2001, serving the last seven years as the Assistant Fire Chief. And whereas Assistant Chief Post was a native of Mystic, Connecticut, choosing to pursue a firefighter career to help his community. And whereas Assistant Chief Post was known for his intelligence, bravery, and pride in his work and his team, resulting in his impact traveling well beyond subbase fence line. And whereas Assistant Chief Post will also be remembered as a dedicated fire service instructor, committed to training and mentoring the next generation of firefighters. And whereas Assistant Chief Post led the subbase Fire Department Response Team that rushed to the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard in Kidney, Maine to assist in controlling and ultimately extinguishing the USS Miami SSN 755 fire in May 2012. And whereas most recently Assistant Post Chief, Chief Post notably contributed to the technical, technically complex confined space rescue of a ledgered Connecticut man who fell down a 30-foot well in November of 2022. And whereas passed away August 2nd, 2023, leaving behind his wife Chrissy, daughter Olivia, and son Johnny. And whereas Jeffrey Post will long be remembered, missed, and honored. Now therefore be resolved that the Groton Town Council does hereby honor Jeffrey B. Post for his commitment to his family, his community, and his fellow firefighters. Dated at Groton, Connecticut this 4th day of August 2023. Signed, Mayor of the Town of Groton, Juan A. Melendez Jr.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation celebrating Natalie Leventhal's 100th birthday. Whereas Natalie Leventhal was born in Bronx, New York on August 22nd, 1923. And whereas her husband Robert Leventhal at the University of Connecticut, where he served in World War II, and they were married in 1946. And whereas Natalie and Robert loved to travel, visit Europe, Israel, Japan, Alaska, also traveling many times to Florida, and they camped throughout the United States. And whereas they moved to Groton in 1960, and they both taught school. Natalie taught 3rd and 4th grades at Claude Chester School from 1960 until 1983, and Robert taught at Fitch School, Fitch High School. And whereas Natalie was inducted into the Groton Education Association Educators Hall of Fame in May 2nd, 2004. And whereas Natalie and Robert raise their family here near the shore. They're proud to have grown their family by adding six grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Natalie still lives in Mystic on West Mystic Ave, where she spends some of her free time reading and knitting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council on behalf of the Town of Groton wishes Natalie Leventhal a very happy 100th birthday, dated at Groton, Connecticut this 22nd day of August 2023. Mayor of the Town of Groton, Juan Melendez Jr.
Thank you. Now we're onto the receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council. Please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-CT.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Okay, first on my list I have Tim Driscoll.
Hello, I'm Tim Driscoll, Corner Bridge Fire Chief. Good evening, Mayor Melendez, Town Councilor Tom Manager Bird. Tonight, I'm requesting your support for the fire pilot distribution policy. Those two appendixes attract expenditures for state and town payment and move taxes. At a special town meeting, Groton Board of Selectment in 1943, the Corner Bridge Fire District was established as a municipal corporation. The entire Corner Bridge Fire District lies within the Town of Groton and is the largest of nine fire districts that protect the town. All nine fire districts are separate entities from the Town of Groton and are funded by taxes levied on the residents and businesses of each individual fire district. State of Connecticut and Town of Groton-owned properties are tax-exempt from fire district taxes. Unfortunately, 63.7% of those tax-exempt properties are located in the Corner Bridge Fire District, creating a loss in tax revenue of more than $1.78 million annually, four times higher than all the other fire districts combined. That loss of revenue is then made up with a higher tax rate to the residents and businesses of the Corner Bridge Fire District. The State of Connecticut partially reimburses the Town of Groton annually for tax-exempt lost revenue of state-owned property. The town loses revenue from the state-owned property without being mandated to provide services. The fire districts lose revenue from the state-owned properties, but unlike the town are mandated to provide fire protection to all state properties and facilities. The Corner Bridge Fire District provides fire protection to Elagroso Southeastern Technical High School, the Groton New London Airport, Connecticut Air National Guard, Candlewood Hill Wildlife Management Area, Bluff Point, and Haley Farm. On February 25th, 1980, the Town of Groton Committee as a whole voted to allocate to the fire districts 65,000, which is 50.39% of the $128,998 State of Connecticut pilot funds received by the town from the State of Connecticut. Each fire district, except for West Pleasant Valley and Mumford Cove, as they contract out their fire protection, received $1,000 for giving mutual aid, with the balance of the funds being distributed amongst the remaining seven fire districts by percentage of state-owned properties within the districts. The State of Connecticut pilot funds received by the town steadily increased over the years, with the town slightly increasing the amount allocated to the fire districts. The last increase granted by the town to the fire districts came in 1992 of a total sum of $121,012, or 7.01% of the $1,725,768, adjusted fiscal year '23 Connecticut pilot received by the town from the State of Connecticut. In 2002, an additional $125,000 was added to the fire district pilot in the Town of Groton budget as payment in lieu of taxes for town-owned tax-exempt properties within each fire district. That funding remains the same and is distributed amongst the nine fire districts by acres of town-owned land and square footage of town-owned buildings within each fire district. Thanks to Town Manager Bird and Mayor Melendez, there was an increase in the fire district pilot for fiscal year ending '24 to help offset 22 years of no increases, along with a safety committee reviewing the long history, mountainous of information, and bringing forward the fire pilot distribution policy. The fire pilot distribution policy, Appendix A, State Pilot Fire District Formula works on percentages of fire district lost tax revenue determined by the Tax Assessor's Office, does not allow for any fire district to receive more payment in lieu of taxes than what they would have received if the State of Connecticut was a taxable entity, helps offset mutual aid costs, and invests in mutual aid enhancement for all town emergency services. The proposed formula is based on the Tax Assessor's assessment, ensuring funding is distributed on a definable loss, and the use of percentages ensures each district is equal affected if funding increases or decreases. Utilizing a 50% allocation of the pilot funds the town receives from the state annually to the fire districts will continue to offset the town's loss, but more importantly lessen the heavier burden currently being placed on the fire districts. Appendix B, just the Town Pilot Fire District Formula, funding remains at 125,000, and it is distributed amongst the nine fire district by acres of town-owned land and square footage of town-owned buildings within each fire district, as started in 2002. Due to the limited funding for town-owned properties, the current formula is fair and consistent to all the fire districts. Hopefully in the future, the town pilot funding will be increased, as there have been several addition, additional town properties and facilities added since 2002, and a similar formula as the state pilot could then be utilized. The fire pilot distribution policy and its appendixes is the biggest piece of legislation any town council has had before them that would so positively help the fire district. I ask that the council send a message to all of Groton and unanimously support and pass the fire pilot distribution policy.
Thank you. Next on my list I have Lauren Gothier.
Thank you. Lauren Gothier, 31 Boards and Road. My comments are addressed more about the Pleasant Valley reuse property. I actually brought up some old notes about that property that I spoke in front of this council back on, in November 2021. What brought this to mind was a receipt of an email that was sent out by town staff inviting certain developers to have a head start to both Pleasant Valley and Groton Heights. I can submit this to the record as well after I finished speaking, but giving certain developers a head start on Pleasant Valley and Groton Heights in anticipation of release of RFP coming up this fall. And my concern is that, one, it's an unfair advantage to those developers that did receive that heads-up, and, two, the bookings to tour the facilities. What's come of that is apparently Groton Heights is now a tear-down because the town has failed to upkeep the property, protect it from vandalism, or fix the falling-in roof. So what could have been a property restored and preserved, the beautiful architecture there, is now a tear-down. So that's a concern, but also looking back at Pleasant Valley, again, District 4 is the only district in town that does not have any town-owned parks, playgrounds, or fields, despite having the largest population by district. So to this day, from that November 2021 address that I had here, we still have not had any meaningful public comment period or input given to the town staff, or to the town council rather, about what an RFP might include to develop that property. And yet it's going out for RFP again, here two years later, even after the 2021 policy was adopted by this council. And I believe that 2021 policy still requires some level of public input before an RFP is issued. So I guess my question to the councilor, to the staff would be, why is Pleasant Valley and Groton Heights not going through that public input process, even under the 2021 policy, which is inferior to the 2023 policy? And on that point, I would hope that despite the 2023 policy, one of the largest pushbacks given by this council was that it was too long and too complicated at four and a half pages, and its appendices removed, that you do not share that same sentiment about the fire district policy, because that's an amazing policy. It has the same length, it has two appendices. So I know that might be a concern that it's too complicated and too long for you guys, but really do consider it as it is. And that's about where it is. You folks should really consider getting more input before putting out an RFP on those properties. I think it'll cause a lot of concerns. And in my work with the State Contracting Standards Board, if we had a state developer come in and get a contract, and then come to find out that the state agency had put out an email soliciting only certain developers to have a head start, that would invalidate their entire contract, and it completely undermines the process. So please consider what you're doing when you're not actively engaging the community before developing a town property, and what you're doing when you're neglecting that town property to make it basically a tear-down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list I have Mary Ellen Furlong.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellen Furlong, 57 Fishtown Lane in Noank, Mystic, Groton. I was here on August 1st, and I gave a talk, a speech, whatever you want to call it. And when I looked at the minutes for today's meeting, I discovered that I read from a prepared statement regarding concerns about consultants hired by the town, but I also stated that the town needed consultants who are from Connecticut or who are familiar with the style of New England architecture. I did not use the word "architecture" at any point in my speech. What, I don't know who took the minutes for this particular meeting. I don't know how that got put in there without one of you saying, wait a minute, she didn't talk about that. What I asked for answers was, I asked the town manager to give me an idea of how many consultants we had and how much they were paid. I don't know what you guys are doing up there. I really don't. Do I need to read my speech from the first again? Is that what you would like? I don't know. How many consultants does the town have? What is the process for hiring consultants? And what is the cost to the town of these consultants? I believe we are paying some to keep track of the STRs. That means that the townspeople are paying for it. We do need consultants from Connecticut or who are familiar with New England to give us better advice. If I wanted to talk about architecture of New England, I might say, hey, that's where they often build the schools with pitched roofs, because they know flat roofs leak and lead to mold. I really find it difficult to find out that we had a consultant for four years who managed to bring us Popeyes Restaurant. That was his total contribution. And you're proud to have a Popeyes here? Does that suits everybody? I don't know what you're doing. And that, that speech, that vacuous speech he gave about how we should shop in places that we don't really care about, that we don't like, and we shouldn't want anything better, again, I say, I see the threat of a depressing future. I, if this is allowed to continue, again, I'll say Groton won't be desirable or acceptable place to live, and Mystic is no longer a really acceptable place to go in the summer. Thank you for I don't know what.
Thank you. That's the end of my list. Would anyone, if anyone else would like to speak at this time, please approach the podium. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive, also RTM, District 3. I'm going to align my comments a good bit with Ms. Furlong's. I've made a couple inquiries to the town manager to try to figure out exactly how many consultants have been on the payroll by the town over the past 10 years, and he has not been forthcoming with that information. I've been suggested to make FOI requests in various numerous ways. So apparently there's no single point of tracking that information. So that should be of concern to everyone in this town, that no one has any idea how much money is going into these consultants' pockets over a period of time, nor what producible, tangible results they're supposed to provide to the town as a result of their services. In regards to the cannabis money referral, I watched the meeting the other week, and again, I'm sort of just standing here flabbergasted that this council is throwing money around, not knowing how much, vague percentages, nothing's actually come in yet, and there's been no due process, no fair announcement to any other, any other organizations in town that provide any of those services that were identified as possible places to put the money. It seems odd to me that one organization keeps coming to the top and seeming to have an inside track to the money that's coming down the pipeline from various sources. I think that should be of concern to everyone in the town. Transparency, accountability, and accessibility is a, not just buzzwords, they have meaning, and they require a process, a fair and open process, and should be something consistent and predictable, much like the, you know, proposed property reuse policies, and the two competing ones of recent note, the 2021 draft and the 2023 draft. There's been some number of emails back and forth in regards to the RTM's power of initiative, trying to at least review the document and discuss it, deliberate on it. We finally actually got an attorney's opinion that was detailed. Received that earlier today. I haven't had time to dive deep into it, but I will. It's interesting to me that it took this long in order to have the attorney engage in a significant fashion, if this was so much rigorous concern about it. Why the attorney did not participate in those meetings when the committee was actually convened and active is a very curious thing. While there may not have been explicit requests for an attorney's opinion, it was often remarked that they wanted feedback. And a draft was provided to the manager after every property reuse committee meeting. In regards to the, the communications to the developers that were inviting a head start, giving a head start to the RFP process, or saying that, hey, RFP is coming, again, I'm wondering, like, this 2021 draft policy was adopted. You know, that's what you guys adopted. Now, part of that process, and to my understanding, like, the narrative, the driving narrative was that everything was on hold until we put a policy in place. So one would think logically that after a policy was put in place, that there would be a reset on every property that was under consideration. If that's the case, then why are these properties being fast-tracked to an RFP? There's been no public hearing, like, even the 2021 draft says that there should be some sort of town-owned property evaluation committee formed by the town manager, and hold some meetings at some point to gather public input on whatever properties that they're going to consider. This has not happened. So you pass a policy, and you're not even following the policy. And we're right back in a fast-track. And I'll have you know that the initial draft, the initial email that went out as an invitation to all those developers actually still included respeler. Still included respeler on the list. It wasn't until someone else mentioned it that it was taken off the list. So who's watching, who's in control here? What's going on? Do we even have a policy that's consistent and being applied, you know, fairly and firmly inconsistent? Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Bird, is there anyone online?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, seeing no further comment, we'll close receipt of citizens' petitions. Onto the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to adopt. I'll make a motion to move the August 1st, 2023 meeting minutes, the August 8th, 2023 special meeting minutes, and the special trust fund contributions from August. So moved.
Second, challenge.
Moved by Melendez, second by Jones. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. Clerk McCauser, you created these minutes, is I correct?
In my office, yes.
On page two, one of the residents was concerned about being misquoted. Would you please remove the second sentence in her comment under number four for Mary Ellen Furlong?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And these minutes are not finalized until they are approved by the council, correct?
Well, there is a recording, which is standard now for the Town of Groton. So that is what it is forever and behold. And the minutes that are written that go into the final record also refer to the recording. So they're not verbatim minutes, they never, you know, they're a description of what was said at such meeting.
All right, thank you. I just would like that removed as per requested from the resident. Thank you very much.
Counselor Gieske.
I will be abstaining from the consent calendar, as I was not a part of the council for the August 8th and August 8th special meeting. I just feel it's not appropriate that I vote on that, since I wasn't part of the council. Thank you.
Counselor Furlong.
I too was just going to align support for editing Mrs. Furlong's request. And I do understand that these are not verbatim, but they are recorded, and we need to, you know, make sure they accurately represent sometimes omission of certain things, and adding in others sometimes can change the course of the statement. So I'm happy to hear that that will be revised. I also wanted to check, I thought I had another note about a misspelling of a name in here as well. Just trying to see if I have it in front of me. If not, I'll move it.
Mayor Melendez, any additions or corrections, such as misspellings, those don't have to be approved by the body. They can just be told to, you know, to my office, and we'll make the correction.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for that.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, so that carries seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Gieske. Onto communication reports. Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past month, I attended the Groton Public Schools Convocation on This past month, I attended the Groton Public Schools convocation on August 25th. It was wonderful to see our teachers and school staff celebrate the start of the new school year. I also attended on August 16th, the Sutton Park info session put on by the Parks and Rec Department. It was a great evening learning about the improvements that they are making from money that was allocated from the council. I received communications about issues on Water Street in Mystic. I referred them to the town manager, who is working on possible solutions, and I thank him for his expediency on that. And then I also received general email that all councils received, but I would like to highlight one regarding the dirt bike slash car accident that happened last week. I want to thank all law enforcement for responding to the incident, and Chief Sazara and the Town of Groton PT for their transparency and leadership in getting the information out to the public.
Thank you.
Point of information? I just wanted to know what the Water Street concerns were, just from my notes.
Yes, there was, it had to do with dropping off for businesses down there, and that there was concern about, it was hard to get, it was hard for traffic to get through.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Council Parker, if you're speaking, you're muted. All right, we'll just skip ahead. Council Franco.
Thank you. I had numerous emails and conversations with residents, as well as some of the staff, the town manager. Notably, I had some communications regarding Sutton Park renovations related to the Parks and Rec presentation, which I had attended at the community center. I would like to wish everybody a happy Labor Day weekend, and I was thankful for those who have fought for workers' rights so we could have a nice 40-day work week and such. And spent the weekend here instead of traveling in downtown Mystic, and as well as around Groton, and attended the 242nd candlelight ceremony at Groton Heights commemorating the battle there, as well as attended the fife and drum ceremony they had. I also walked the grounds of Groton Heights School Building after seeing that somebody had made some notes on social media that there were some issues there just days before, and all those issues seemed to have been taken care of. Also, it's been a rough week for Groton and the public safety area. There was a house fire on Fishtown Road near the Mystic River School, which left the house inhabitable. There were two buildings on fire over in the sub-base fire district area, both uninhabited, as well as the accident that happened at the bottom of Long Hill Road. And I'd like to send my condolences to Tiara Wheeler, who's a 24-year-old who lost her life in that tragic accident. And I'd like to thank our public safety community for all that they're doing in our community and responding to those who are in need. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker, if you are on the phone, you can unmute by star six. Okay, Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received the same communications as other councilors. I too attended the school convocation at the Fitch High School, which was a terrific ceremony and welcoming to all of the new teachers that are coming in this year. Sunday night, attended the, again, like Council Franco, the 242nd ceremony and memorial service for the Battle of Groton Heights that happened on September 6, 1781. It was a terrific ceremony with some just outstanding excellent information on the history of the battle and what had sort of gotten on, and just the awareness of how many families were affected in the battle that killed multiple members of the same family. So it was, it sort of brought home a lot of, just thinking about all those people. A question had come up about home batteries, recycling home batteries here in Groton, and we do have a way, if you have batteries, you can recycle them at our transfer station. There's a building next to the bin for electronics recycling, the bin that's used for computers and TVs. There's a building there and a door, and there's a bucket inside that door that you can drop off your home batteries of any kind, all the stuff that goes in toys and electronic devices and such. And the public works will take those batteries and sort them and recycle them to the proper place. So thank you to the person who asked the question about the home batteries, and it's nice to know that we have that service.
Thank you. Council Parker.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I attended the convocation and welcomed back to all the students and the teachers. I attended the Fort Roosevelt, 242nd event, as well as the Star Burying Ground, which was put on by the Sons of the American Revolution, who honored five that were buried at Star Burying Ground, which is behind Pleasant Valley, actually. And let me see. Want to welcome a new CEO for TVCCA, Josh Kelly. The formal announcement will be in the day newspaper tomorrow, but I want to give a shout-out to him. And thanks to Deb Monahan for her 50 years of being there as a CEO. My sincere condolences to all affected by that accident on Route 12. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Borlon.
Thank you. Again, I just want to, you know, like, it was already stated, you know, thankful for the holiday weekend, but also remembering all the first responders, as well as cashiers and other people who worked the gas station. And while we were out enjoying our Monday off, a lot of people had to work. So it wasn't off for everybody, and not everybody got holiday pay or paid for that time. So, you know, sometimes it makes me reflect on how fortunate I am and how fortunate most of us are, but there's a large percentage of our community who did not get Monday off and still had to work, let it be making sure you got your groceries to start your work week, or being open, or cops and law enforcement, as well as first responders alike. So just, you know, I hope, you know, one day we all will get an equal opportunity and a fair equitable wage so that you get the proper time off and it's paid, or at least time and a half. I attended the Coast Guard concert at the Yukon Avery Point on Sunday. Every year, that kind of closes out December. It's kind of bittersweet, but also really nice to go and listen. That was on Sunday, heavily attended. It was a lot, it was great to speak to a lot of people in the community, sit out by the water, and enjoy a free concert. Music and arts are near and dear to my heart and very important for equal and accessible exposure in our community. With that, the Fitch High School marching band is looking for volunteers. Every year, they have their annual fundraiser, which they do a home show. They need people that are willing to help park cars and buses, from helping with concessions. It's one of their only large fundraisers that they do. As you know, the marching band is not fully funded by the school program, so help is needed. So if anyone has any time, that will be happening on October 21st. You can reach out to the band director at the school and express your interest in volunteering. I received some communications about Pleasant Valley Elementary School, concerns that the building is no longer in use and it looks like a blight. I did address that at one of the other meetings. I did drive by and look at the property. It still has a lot of trees that are starting to grow that shouldn't be there, hoping that this will be addressed, and I can address this under the manager's comments. As well as Groton Heights, I did take a look at that. I did get some concerns about traffic and concerns in Mystic, and I'm sad to hear about the fires that did occur. Also, the accident near and dear in this area to the young lady who lost her life and family that's from New London, very close to some of the distant family of that family. And my heart goes out, very smart, educated, and very well-established in the community, and it just very tragic. But thank you not only to the cops who responded, but also to paramedics who are there providing also essential medical alongside of our law enforcement. Don't forget, on September 15th at 2:00 p.m., the mural cutting, ribbon cutting will be at Outer Light for that beautiful mural that will be out there. Also, I did email the town manager regarding my referral to the RTM, asking for an opinion about citizens.
Thank you.
If you're an ex-official member, having the right, the referral that came back from the attorney was not what I sent, so I'm waiting to hear back from the town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Westerveld.
Thank you very much. I also received lots of different communications, both phone calls and emails, regarding the RFP process and the property reuse with the 2021 that was adopted, the policy that was adopted. Also, the, received a lot of communications about the damage at Groton Heights at this point, which has turned that property into something that may have been profitable and may have been sellable for the town to something that might just need to be torn down because it no longer has much value at all, which I'm not really sure how that can happen if we're paying attention to our own properties. And we're going to have to look into who's responsible for that, who's responsible for the upkeep, when, even if another developer takes the, takes the reins for that project and/or property, and they're going to try to develop it. Do they own it? Do we own it? They obviously don't own it yet, but who's responsible for the upkeep? Because that property should have never gotten to the point where it's falling apart. And if I recall, there was funding set aside to repair that roof, so I, we need to find answers to how the roof got as damaged as it did to the point where floors are now falling in. Also, the cannabis funding, I received a lot of communications about that and how we're allocating funds that we don't have, that we don't have a value for, we don't have a good feel for how much money is there, but we're giving the money away anyway. It doesn't seem right, doesn't seem physically, or excuse me, fiscally responsible. So we need to continue looking into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Jacom.
I'm sorry, may I add one more thing? Also, with regards to the accident last week, which claimed the life of those, of that young lady, I feel very horrible for the family, but I just want to also reach out and say that the woman who was a completely innocent party to that, she's going to suffer from the trauma of knowing this person died when she hit her car. Nobody said anything about that, but I think that, I think that bears some noting. It's unfortunate that she's going to have to go through, you know, years of feeling like it could be her fault. What could she have done differently? And that's not fair to her. As much as I hate to see any life lost, we have to remember those that are also affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jacom.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar communications and events I attended, some of the other councilors, I won't repeat it. I did also attend, though, the City Food Drive and Catherine Konowski meet and greet with the teachers, so I did want to wish them a good school year, as they started last Thursday, Tuesday. So hopefully, it's a great year. And as for the cannabis things, I did receive some emails and communications supportive of that, but I'll talk to that when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to note that someone sent out a mass email, it seems, pretending to be me, asking for gift guard donations. It was not me that sent it. It wasn't even a hack of my email. It was someone just made an account and impersonated me asking for donations. I want to thank everybody who reached out to me, telling me that there was a problem. I'm just trying to inform as many people as I can that it's not me asking for donations, and definitely do not give this person any money. Okay, thank you. Onto clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Melendez. So the RTM has a, their rules and procedures committee will have a meeting tomorrow, the 6th of September, and they have a referral to review 9.6 of their rules. And then the regular RTM meeting will be scheduled for September 13th at the Groton Senior Center, well, it's called Thrive 55 now, and it has been for quite some time. So Thrive 55, the living center, and that will begin at 7:00. There is a vacancy in 7th District. It's a Democratic vacancy, so it has to be filled with a Democrat. The representatives from that District have the authority to elect someone to fill the vacancy. They will have a caucus at 6:30 on the same night as the regular meeting for the RTM on September 13th. Anyone interested should contact the town clerk's office for more information, or come to the meeting on September 13th. That's that for the RTM.
Okay. Council Borlon.
Yes, I just want to make sure in receipt of the email that I sent, one of the things that was referred was my recommendation to review the whole thing that was reversed, saying ex-official members can't speak under public comment, and they could only speak to the agenda item. And I had requested, which is on the agenda, a referral stating that if there was something not on the agenda, and as a taxpayer, you should be able to come speak, just like RTM members come here. And so the attorney's opinion doesn't reflect my comments, so I'm just hoping that that would be updated in a timely manner. Thank you.
If I could speak to that, Mayor?
Sure.
The referral was given on the night of the meeting, on the subject that was given at the night of the meeting of August, and August 9th, and so that was given to the town clerk's office. Anything that happens after that August meeting cannot be included. You can't, you know, I don't know, I don't know the, you know, the exact verbiage at this very moment of what you sent, but I will review everything for you and communicate that information to the entire town council, if that's what you wish. This wasn't really a council, maybe it is for the whole council, because you're looking at what council, or all ex-official members, what they can, what their authorities are as far as citizens petitions. I'll send that all to you.
Okay. Council Borlon.
Great. I mean, I just don't want to waste the time, as it was my referral. And the direct question in the minutes I rewatched the video online, I directly asked if there's something that's not on the agenda as a taxpayer speaking. That was my question, and the attorney's response wasn't that.
Okay.
So if you guys need...
She responded to this.
Then would you like me to resend my referral?
Council Borlon, she's already responded to, she's in receipt of your communication.
I know, but I'm, you're interjecting.
She's in receipt of communication. You had already asked this exact question.
I have another, I am saying it.
We're moving on. Clerk of the council.
That's inappropriate.
The town council, you have the communication from Genevieve Cerf regarding artificial turf used for playing fields, for ball fields, that was sent to probably everyone. If not, it is attached to your meeting, and you all received that information. Then I also have information regarding the upcoming election. So we have, September 6th is, so tomorrow is the deadline for any nominations for minor parties. So we do have, and everybody knows, we have petitioning candidates from various places. Those are minor parties, not the major parties that we all are familiar with. If they get together and they have a meeting and they nominate candidates, then they have to submit that information by September 6th. That's tomorrow. October 6th, which is next month, that's the first day that absentee ballots are available for the November 7th election. That's 31 days before the election. That's the law. So we have a new, well, it was introduced last year. The Secretary of the State's website has an online application. It's very interesting. You have to be very careful, because what happens with that, it has a cutoff, and so you might be able to submit something on, you know, four days before the election, but it's already been cut off by the Secretary of the State. I don't believe, well, it wasn't last year, there wasn't any warning, it wasn't like you couldn't do it. So we had people submitting applications the day of, and the day after, and the couple of days after the election, and we had to respond to them. So pay attention. If you're going to do an absentee ballot, an electronic absentee ballot, think of it as how quickly can a mail, piece of mail get to you. Today, mail isn't as fast as it used to be between, you know, anywhere in Connecticut. It used to be very fast, but it isn't because we're using the mail in a different way. You can't delay the, being the U.S. Post Service, it's really, what we want as human beings, we want to buy online, so those packages have to get to us anyway. So your best bet is to come in person or do it early. Don't wait until the last minute. So October 6th is right around the corner. That's all I have for the council.
Thank you. Council Borlon.
Thank you. Just wondering if there's going to be... Thank you. Just wondering if there's going to be any education that, you know, with this being the first election where the city will be voting on the same day, on November 7th, do we know yet if it's going to be two ballots or front and back? And obviously, it would only affect Districts 2 and 3 since it's the city where they'll be voting. Just wondering if there's anything up on websites yet. I guess maybe to the town manager, any type of education starting to come out now?
Does it follow their mic? Or do probably the registrars?
Would they take direction, though, from who? Who can make a recommendation to?
The council can make a recommendation, but they don't report to anyone but the public.
So we just make a recommendation by email to make sure that the education's coming out?
If you send it to me, I can forward it certainly.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll copy on the forward.
Thank you so much.
Town manager.
Good evening. One, Groton Heights. I think there's a bit of a telephone game going on. It's not a tear down at all, so the outside is perfectly fine. So, and that's when I arrived, when I arrived, you know, the windows being broken out, which is going to happen in any abandoned building. When I arrived in 17, this school had been closed for 10 years at that point, and there was already a hole in the roof. Once we got the funds, it was repaired. And I went in there about two or three years ago last. Even when I got here in 17, it was already very moldy in there. There was never a likelihood of anything inside being saved. It was always because it sat for so long. The outside, the nice exterior is what's always been the plan to save. So there's no change in that plan at all. In 19, there was no process prior to me arriving. The schools just kind of held on to these older schools. In 19, there was a committee formed by the council. They had the superintendent, the mayor, myself, a planning commissioner member before the PCC, Board of Ed, president, RTM member, I think Samantha Evans was on there, John Reiner, you were there already, Counselor?
I was there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what it was. That was adopted in August, September of 19. Then we had a policy in place to, for the school to officially start turning things over to us. The Board of Ed did turn it over to us, to the town. So, but no, every intention of keeping that building up. We have no intention of tearing that building down. Let's see. In terms of public input process with Groton Heights and South Pleasant Valley, as we've talked about before, in terms of marketing, you market these intensive for a long time. And prior, they'd been found to be eligible for sale, but we are going to restart the process, but you still want to keep that in case you do sell, to keep that marketing going. So we do intend to follow the process that was adopted. So I'll be forming a committee. We'll be getting public, well, I think it's the council that gets that next stage of public input, but I get input from others on the RFP, and then the council, RTM, and the PCC give input from there. So we will be following that process. Let's see. Just a reminder, next week's committee of the whole is on a Monday, because originally the 12th is a primary day. But there wasn't one, but however, it was scheduled that way. So the 11th is the meeting. Let's see.
No, no, we, we...
Do you want me to move it back?
No, no, we moved it to, it was originally, so when we passed our schedule last year, we passed the meeting to be on the 12th.
That was in August, because we're used to the general election primaries being in August.
Right, right. So the meeting is on the 12th next month, the first count, right? That's what you said. It's on the Monday, the 11th.
11th, yeah.
Right. Last year, we originally passed it to be on the 12th, because we thought that the primary was not in, we thought that it was in August rather than this month. So what we did a couple of months ago was we changed that August one that was supposed to be on Monday to Tuesday, and we trained this one from Tuesday to Monday in anticipation of there potentially being... So now there's not a primary, so it didn't matter, but that's what we did.
Thank you.
Received an email on a property on a, if you're familiar, 99 Gold Star Highway, the Groton Inn and Suites, you may know they received permission from the PCC to convert from, they're a semi-hotel now, but they also have longer terms today. They're turning more into a full, long-term, more of an apartment complex. But there's about six families left there. There was a complaint about mold and potential other issues. So I sent the building department, the Conbridge Fire Marshal went, and Ledge Light all went through, and there was nothing, everything that they saw was fine in the units. There are some dilapidated areas, but they're getting ready for a tear down. There's multiple buildings out there. There's no findings of anything to take action on. But we did a full response, because we do not want another Branford Manor, especially of our own. Let's see. Colonel Ledgerd School, the closing is September 14th. That's just about done for that. They still have a little bit of a process in the city to wrap up, but it's just about there. Data Center lawsuit, as I mentioned, that's been turned over to our insurance company, because anytime you save money, you're requesting money, it goes to them. And there's so much material involved, they're still reviewing material. They're not familiar with any of the background. So I had sent an email to them asking for them to plan on coming here to the council. They have not replied yet. So. We had a bit of a feral cat issue in the neighborhood, and we've put a plan in place for trapping, getting them spayed or spayed, neutered, getting the surgeries, and then bringing them back. So that's in progress. We're going to probably start including a little bit of money in our budget in the future to help with that. Now, by state law, the only thing we do with cats is bites. We don't have space in the facility for cats. However, we team up with other nonprofits when these kind of issues pop up. The only thing we ran into with this one is the couple vets that we used to use had kind of closed things down for us because they had too many other things going on. But now our ACOs have made plans with two vets to get these surgeries done, so we'll put a little money. So there's a nonprofit that pays for many of these, but we need a little bit of money towards some of these when we can't find other dollars. So that's in the process. No Inc., there's some readings in some catch basins coming back with high BOD and measure of organic waste. Our Public Works has been out there several times. Sometimes there's smells, sometimes there's not. And they haven't found anything yet. And it's unusual, if it was like a sewer line break, that it would be multiple catch basins. So they're having trouble figuring that out. However, tomorrow, they're going to dry these ones completely out and see if there's any seepage in them. It could even be water coming into them from the sound even. So they're trying to figure that out. So they're working their way through. The solar company that's doing the solar potentially for our transfer station was scheduled next week, but they have to reschedule for the 26th. Just they got pulled off on something else. Public Works mowed at Pleasant Valley last week. They are returning in the next couple of weeks to remove bigger brush and weeds from the parking lots. Just like Parks and Recs, Public Works have had several empty positions, and they're having a heck of a time keeping up on things. So they're just kind of playing whack-a-mole this summer. As I mentioned before, the Parks and Rec Department, they usually have a handful of people doing mowing on their stuff. They didn't find a single person this summer to help, so it's been a real challenge this summer. We did some cleaning up at Groton Heights last week. We had an issue. We had those AEDs there going in. There was two outdoor ones. They had a SIM card issue, because with the outdoor ones, when you open the box, it's supposed to call to dispatch. We've got those, we had to send those back in. We got them back, so those will be installed pretty soon here, which will be good. And then looking at, just to mention also, one of Counselor Borlon's longstanding items has been done, the credit card machine at the transfer station has been done. Of course, the first weekend it was available, it went down this weekend, but now it's ready to go. So, and then we're having a challenge in Public Works. We've had one engineer vacant for two years, about two years. Another one just went vacant, and another, the third is going on maternity leave. So we've got to find some contractual engineers quickly. It's already been a huge challenge, but we're just seeing other places. You see, the state can't find engineers right now. There's just such a huge demand for them. In terms of water streak, we've spent quite a bit of time, and actually, the traffic authority invited some vendors in to talk about water streak, but you have to have close access to the buildings to bring it to the restaurants, especially to bring eggs and other things in. You have to be able to park real close. But water streak is not well laid out for that. So what they do now is they pull up on the sidewalks, and you could get two, even three of them there. So there's only two options that are even possible there. One, you know, we have the police station, substation and restrooms there. That's actually, we leased that out from the art museum. Those four parking spots could become potentially a delivery van pull-in. That'd be about $40,000 to $50,000 to do the work, and we have to renegotiate the lease, but that is something we're looking at potentially. Other than that, the only other thing is down the road where there's a few spots in the road is maybe. And Greg Hanover didn't think it would likely even fit there. So really, there's not many resolutions, other than one potential delivery van spot. So we're still looking at it, though. Solar compacters shipped, that'd be installed in Mystic shipped last week. We should get them sometime this week, and we'll get them down as soon as we can. Hoping to bring the TVCCA lease to the council soon. The attorneys for TVCCA and one of our attorneys have kind of been going back and forth on some of the, back on the lease, but hopefully, that should be just about done. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Oh, I should also mention, Counsel Borlon, I did forward a request concerning the review of the RTM rule. I forwarded to the FOIA Commission to get their input. That would be the only other legal place I could think of that would have any potential issue.
Counsel Westerveld.
Yes, thank you very much. I just, if you don't mind, I wanted to clarify my comment earlier about tearing down Groton Heights. I was not anticipating that that's going to be something that the town's going to have to do. Having spoken with a developer about that, he's concerned that he's not going to be, if he were successful, he'd be able to save the structure itself. But if we feel confident that the structure is sound and we'd be able to save it, then I appreciate that.
And our intent is to put in the RFP that the structure, because there's a lot of interest in saving that, that the structure must be preserved.
Okay, good. That...
Now, the only way, let's say we go through the whole process, and we get, you know, six and all three saying they can't, then we'll restart and look at it. But we have every intention of, I don't know of anything on the frame itself, the main structure that would affect anything.
Okay. If the main structure is sound, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon.
I just first want to thank you for giving us the update on the AED machines. Is that something I brought back, you know, to you only about like four months ago? And the rapid response to get those implemented and have outdoor access has been wonderful in protecting our town. So thank you for that. The solar compactors as well, something else that I was extremely passionate about when the money first came out, and I'm happy to see that come to fruition, as well as the credit card machine being implemented at the service station. Most people don't have cash anymore. Also, you know, having the military discount implemented there, so that will be nice. I think I did see a post online about the credit card machines. Is that up now?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Perfect. And the policy that you talked about from 2019, I remember being part of that, and it was shocking, and we went from nothing to a page, and now it's moved to like a 2021 draft. So it's moved down the line. So I can agree that a lot of buildings were sitting for quite some time, many years before any of us were involved, so I appreciate the update on that. And the update on Pleasant Valley School, per the emails and calls that I've received about that. I would love to keep an update on the No Inc. waste as you get more information on that. And the other thing was, I did have someone reach out to me, you know, verbally at a store, asking what's going on with that property, in knowing that was kind of up in the air about where the line was.
The parking spots?
Correct. Do we have any updates coming on that anytime soon?
I had asked a couple of times recently, sorry, I'm missing the microphone. I'd asked Eric Callahan a couple of times recently. I wanted him to come in and give an update. He's reached out to the attorney for the landowner, but the attorney himself is not hearing from the landowner. So I don't want to talk about legal options, but I'll just say we haven't heard from the landowner, but I intend to have Eric come in an executive session to look at options. We do think we have access to what we legally have access. It's just, there's some other actions we could potentially take, so.
Okay. So maybe some type of update will come up soon for that.
I would like to have heard from their attorney, but that doesn't look like it's going to happen.
And any updates for Paquonik Plains with solar lighting and also those flooding things that you were going to put in the ground? Any updates on that?
I haven't, but I'll ask about it and get an update.
And I think that is all I have for the time. Thank you. Most important things, the credit card machine, the AED machine, definitely very exciting to have.
Solar lights and drainage swells?
Yeah, yeah. Having the access to an AED machine at the library, I think, is just amazing. And where are the outside ones going to be located?
One is Paquonik Plains, and then I originally was thinking that it was Calvin Burles, but I actually think it's Esker Point is where it is. If I remember correctly, I believe so.
Perfect. That's exciting. I think we're going to be a bit of a forerunner on that compared to some other towns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Franco.
Thank you. In the name of transparency and being equal and equitable for our community, can you give, there's been comments tonight about property reuse and the 2023 versus the 2021. And as a counselor, I've received emails from the town attorney stating numerous items of what they found in the 2023. Can you please give an update on that?
Well, we have, I don't have it in front of me. We have received a couple of different opinions. The first opinion was a short, you know, oftentimes, if we just want to get a gist of what's happening, something, we get a brief opinion. And then, because it's so much more expensive to get a full opinion. So we had a more lengthy opinion done this time, which was received today. All councilors and all RTM members have that now. There are issues with the newer policy as written, not the one we adopted, the power initiative.
So for the 2023, from what I've read, and can you confirm, it goes against our charter? It goes against some state statutes, and it's vague, and the seven-page written opinion from the attorney has many concerns. Is that correct?
There were quite a few concerns. I mean, anything could be, you know, fixed, obviously. Yes, there were concerns.
Thank you. And tonight, it was mentioned that there is a list the town has that if anybody's interested in property, they can sign up for a list, and that they were getting a head start, and that that could potentially invalidate an RFP process. So if developers want to be on a list, an update list of what's going on with our town properties, is that considered getting a head start in validating an RFP?
Well, it is a head start, but it does not invalidate anything. You know, the state might very well have a rule towards that. Our attorneys have been involved over the years with these processes. They understand our processes, and I don't think that would, it wouldn't be a legal issue, I'll say.
All right. So, I mean, if we've been sitting on town property and haven't been moving or putting anything out for RFPs, and developers want to know, could you give me a heads up when you're going to start moving again?
That's pretty standard.
That's pretty standard? And that's basically what's going on? Is that what...
Anybody who wants to can sign up for the contact sheet, just like anyone who wants a copy of the agendas for the council, decide in advance for that and get them sent to them.
So anybody can do that? Okay. Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I will also, the policy for schools, I'll send that out just so you have that, Counsel Westerveld, so in case anyone has any questions on it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Committee reports. Personal appointments, Chair Jacob.
No meeting, no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Rules Committee Chair Parker, I think she dropped off.
She had to step away for a moment. Yeah, she had to attend something at her own city council. Maybe she'll be back. I'll let you know if I see her.
I don't believe they met this month anyway. And Public Safety Chair McBride is not here. However, they did meet. Do you want to update?
Sure. Our last meeting was on August 22nd. Counsel McBride and Franco were in present, as well as Town Manager Bert, Paquonik Bridge Fire Chief, Assistant Chief, and Board President. During the meeting, finalized the policy that had been being worked on for a small number of months. The committee voted in favor, 2 to 0 to 0, to pass the policy to the town council. The town manager, from my recollection, it's the town manager, the fire chiefs, which you have a letter here, that was dispersed to all of the councilors from the fire chiefs. And the town assessor are in support of this policy, and will be taking up later this evening, and we can have full dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto new business. Director of Information Technology Position. Director of Information Technology Position.
Does the whole item have to be read, or just the last resolve?
Okay, page eighteen. I'm actually not sure, because, usually we just do that for the ordinances.
I think the title and the result are, is traditionally what we've gone with when they're longer.
Okay. I recommend a resolution updating the title of the manager of Information Technology Services to Director of Information Technology Services. The job description and the maximum wage range for the position. Resolved that the town council hereby approves an update to the title of the manager of Information Technology Services to the Director of Information Technology Services. The update to the job description as noted, and an increase to the maximum salary range up to $120,000 per annum.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, second by Jones.
Council Board along?
Um, yes, when do you think this will be posted?
The, for the IT director, that diary, it's been posted. If you recall at the last meeting, because he's gone already, we said we were going to get it posted. And hopefully we'll get some responses.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. All right, on to Town Clerk Supervisor Position. This is page twenty-two. I'll recommend a resolution adding the position of supervisor town clerk to the town clerk's department and updating the job description. Resolved that the town council hereby approves a new full-time supervisor town clerk position to the town clerk's department. Pay range of $65,387 to $82,714. And the updates to the job description, including reinstating the certification language as must be able to attain designation as a certified Connecticut municipal clerk within the first five years of employment, and certified municipal clerk IIMC within the first six years of employment, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, second by Jacob.
Council Board along?
I just had a question for the town manager. Um, you're considering vested at five, right? Is that correct?
For, for non-union, yes.
For this position in particular?
Yes, yes.
So wouldn't it make sense, I know one of the things I'd recommended originally on some of the older ones, the older report that had lines through it, was to obtain it within three. Because if one can't obtain it, then at the five-year mark, they already have a cut anyway. They're gonna, you know, it doesn't really accentify. So I, I just think the three years would make a little bit more logical sense in the terms of like the progression of, of being vetted or non-vetted. So that's my first question to the town manager.
I'd ask a better question.
Clerk McCauser?
Yeah, sorry, the town manager really doesn't know about this position and the certification programs, which you're not aware of. Sometimes they're very difficult to attain the classes, because they only hold them, the Clerks Association holds them, you know, throughout the year. And so you might miss something because of an illness. So the five-year, I think, was mentioned in committee at the hall, and that's what was adopted for the Clerks Association, and then the International Clerks, Municipal Clerks Association, which is really a silly thing to have, in my opinion. Uh, that would be a six-year for sure, because that really, you're really actually removing the person who's taking the test for a length of time to go for studies. It's just, it's just a, you know, a different thing than you, you're used to. And our clerk, our, our office needs our employees in office, not away at school. If the, if the school was, uh, online, which they should be by, by this point in life, right? Not to have to travel, you know, six hundred miles to the destination of where they're holding the courses. Uh, you know, it really, it's expensive for the clerk's office and time-consuming. So having the length of time is great, and we'll address those other issues when they come up. Because you'll have to give me more money or, you know, to pay for those things.
I guess my follow-up questions to town manager are the clerk. Do we currently have anybody in the clerk's office that have both of these?
Do we have a clerk? I have some of them, and I have a clerk that has some, some of them, but that doesn't really, we really shouldn't discuss that. That's off-topic.
Well, I was just looking as far as qualifications and, you know.
It's off-topic. You're not asking, you know, I'm sorry, that's off the topic of the agenda item, please.
Um, point, point of information, I, I'm in on topic.
Do you have any?
Town manager, do you have a say on that?
Yeah.
Or voting on that?
You can ask those things personally.
I'm voting on a position. So I have a right to ask.
Well, I know it was discussed at the count, I believe, um, that HR director was in agreement with the way it's worded. She put this together, so I defer to the, you know, to the experts. So I have not been involved in this process, so.
But my comments are not off-topic. They're generally in the paper.
Yeah, I agree. There, Jermaine.
I probably might be abstaining from this, not because I don't think we need this position, but I, I don't agree with the parameters of the time length. Um, so that would be my, I think we need the position, but I can't vote on something that I feel doesn't match what, in my opinion, should be. So, um, there's a chance I may abstain, but I am for the position. I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions.
Aye.
Carries six in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Board along. Onto Veteran War Memorial Committee Establishment. This is page twenty-six.
How much do you want, um, read the whole thing or?
No, just here and here, and the starting, resolve, yeah.
Resolve. And the title. A resolution adopting a Town of Groton Veterans and War Memorial Committee. Resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby reestablishes the Veterans and War Memorial Committee as a permanent committee, and be it further resolved that the committee will have the charge of upkeep and improvements to the Groton Veterans Memorial Park, and to devise and undertake programs to promote Groton veterans and local war memorials. And be it further resolved that the committee will be made up of five voting members appointed by the mayor, including the chair, to two-year terms. And be it further resolved that no town staff will be assigned to the committee. And be it further resolved that the committee shall appoint a secretary among their members to take and file minutes in compliance with the free, should be freedom?
Okay.
Freedom of Information Act. And be it further resolved that the committee shall be authorized to utilize volunteers and work through the appropriate process to solicit donations.
Second, second.
The motion by Jones, a second by Board along. Council Board along?
Uh, just want to thank Council Jones and Franco for bringing this forward. Being a military community, I think it's very vital, as, you know, I have a son who serves on the USS Virginia here, and many family members that have served here, and a lot of folks have some form of a connection in this town to the military indirectly or directly. Um, and I think it's a vital way. Um, as I stated at the last meeting, you know, when I go away to marching band competitions with my son, and we go to Pennsylvania, it always lines up with their hometown heroes. And they do huge banners on all the flagpoles of different people from their community that have served, and they're all recognized, and I just think it's a great asset to our town. And also, I think sometimes some of our memorials maybe get, sometimes not intentionally, but get forgotten as we, you know, decrease and not have enough staff. I didn't know, and brought up to the town manager, and in fact, the green in Old Mystic is our green, um, right there in the center of, at the end of Route 27. And we didn't know, and the neighbors were mowing it, and someone moved in and decided they didn't want to mow it anymore. And there is a war monument there. So I think it will help us keep a hold of what properties and things are ours. And I'm really excited to see the volunteer outreach for this. So, um, thanks again to Council Franco and Council Jones for bringing it forward, and it has my full support. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto adoption of CCOG Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaption Plan. Page twenty-seven. I recommend a resolution adopting the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2023 through 2028. Resolved by the town council. One, the plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the Town of Groton. Two, the respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommendate, recommended actions assigned to them. Three, future revisions and plan maintenance required by 44 CFR 201.6. And FEMA are hereby adopted as a part of this resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution. For the annual report on the progress of the implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the town council, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, second by Jones. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the employee, employee ARPA funds date extension.
Let's take this one.
Okay.
Resolution updating the active date of employment for Town of Groton Employee ARPA payments. Uh, whereas the Town of Groton legislative bodies approve payments to designated employees under the American Rescue Plan Act grant on February 7th, 2023. Whereas in order to be eligible, those designated employees must have been working for the town as of March 16th, 2020, and continue to work for the town at the time of the distribution of funds. And whereas the town, a total of 148,000, has been paid to designated employees, and a portion of the original allotment remains. And whereas, at the committee of the whole meeting on August 8th, 2023, the council took into consideration the feedback for some union leadership suggesting that the active date of employment deadline be updated to March 31st, 2021. Now therefore be resolved that the town council hereby approves an update to the active date of employment to March 31st, 2021, allowing additional employees to be eligible for the ARPA and employment payments.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Franco, second by Jones.
Council Board along?
Uh, I guess to the town manager, um, is there any plan to extend this any further?
If you may recall, there's still some funds left, and it's actually on the agenda for next week. Uh, Arneisha Green will be here to discuss the remaining funds with, if you recall, she was asked to bring some scenarios back to the council, so, next Tuesday, Monday.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the cannabis tax revenue dispersment. Page thirty.
Uh, recommend resolution to authorize dispersment of the cannabis municipal tax payment for FYE 2024, whereas Connecticut Public Act 21-1 allows for the sale of recreational cannabis. And whereas a 3% municipal tax is collected on such sales and given to the local municipality. And whereas the funds received may be used for certain purposes, including, one, streetscape improvements and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailers, hybrid retailers, or micro-cultivators are located. Two, education programs or youth employment and training programs in the municipality. Three, services for individuals living in the municipality who released from DOC, Department Corrections, custody. Four, mental health or addiction services. Five, youth services bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards. And six, community civic engagement efforts. And whereas the Town of Groton does currently have recreational cannabis retailers either under operation or in the process of prompting discussion on use of any municipal tax revenue received. And whereas Community Speaks Out is a volunteer nonprofit organization focusing on improving the community by providing education, prevention, and resources to individuals and their families to access treatment and recovery. And whereas Community Speaks Out runs a youth program that recently lost state funding that is expected to be received over a two-year period. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Groton Town Council authorizes a 75% of the recreational cannabis, 3% municipal tax revenue received in FYE 2024 with a cap of $100,000 to be distributed to the Community Speaks Out. And be it further resolved that the request be forwarded to the representative town meeting, RTM, for consideration. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Jacob, second by Franco.
Council Board along?
Uh, thank you. Um, so, you know, for full disclosure, I'm in full support of, of all outside resources. That's probably one of the lines during the budget that I'm the most passionate about, because we don't have a shelter here, and a lot of our outside resources that Groton can't house, we have to send people elsewhere for different things that we, you know, just don't have, like shelters or things like that. Um, with that being said, we were getting some NIP funds coming back to us, and we already allocated. Uh, how much was allocated, John, uh, town manager, to Community Speaks Out?
I'm sorry, can't, we're off topic.
Yeah, we, we already did a large amount there. And I appreciate, um, Community Speaks Out. I've known some clients and things that I've worked with directly and indirectly in the community where they've done wonderful things to help get people into recovery, let it be find a bed or resources. My concern is, if now we take the cannabis money and we allocate it to the same group, all of, you know, well, I thank, uh, Councilor, um, Gieske for trying to meet in the middle after my comments to move the number to cap it. Originally, it was just going to be an entire, we, we, to this date, don't know what we're getting. So there's no urgency. Money is not sitting here not being utilized, um, and, and folks aren't going without. Um, so I did some research to call other towns to see, most of their towns are not going to be allocating them until they kind of know what is going on. And I asked, will you be putting up something online to give all nonprofits a fair and equitable shot to apply? And they stated that that would be their intention. Now, what their council chooses to do, I don't know. My vote tonight against this has nothing to do with Community Speaks Out or what their programming does, or how they help folks in our community. It's merely that when you look at addiction, you need to make sure you're hitting all the marks. So if you call 211 and Community Speaks Out reaches out and they help you get a bed, they're putting you in a bed somewhere, some program recovery. We can't fund just one program without funding all the feeder programs that that community utilizes. Addiction is widespread and homelessness is everywhere. Um, so I'm, around time, I'll take my second term. So I did look out, not saying that we should, but I'm part of Knowing Community Support Services, a nonprofit. I would have to abstain if they did come to the floor to vote, but they do do mental health. They have adolescent girls that are being sexually trafficked, um, that live in homes throughout our community. Um, they do drug and addiction. If you read all of these different things, it's expectation for juveniles. Um, you know, helping people get access to programs and things like that, which also help the rates of addiction. Um, marijuana is something that was around when I was a kid, but it's so much more accessible now, and it's a cannabis fund. And I really think that the youth programs, there's a lot of different youth programs that it could help. Um, so I just don't feel comfortable as of today to fund it. It's not the program, it's the process. And I would just like for this to go up on our website, invite other agencies an opportunity to come around the table. And if this agency is the only agency that responds, then I'm in full support. But tonight, I cannot.
Thank you.
I'll take my second term when it comes around. Thank you.
Council Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I said what I did at the Cal, but, um, you know, I told most of the councilors here, either during the meeting or after, if you have other organizations that you want to request funding for, you know, bring that up. There's still a 25% allocation, there are funds sitting there. So supposedly, there's, there's people doing the, the work of the organizations. Okay, so request those funds and try to get support to fund those organizations. If you want a process, then okay, bring that to the council, we could talk about that process. So I would urge support of this. I, I think you, we did it with the NIPS. Uh, I brought, I, you know, I did my research, I brought where I think the organization would maximize its dollars. So I strongly support this, and I urge the council to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gieske?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to speak on, um, the allocation. We only, I think that, you know, there were concerns on the council that this was, and my concerns included of allocating all the money, uh, which is why I proposed the 75% amendment, um, but with a cap of $100,000, because as we still don't know, we don't know that money, but Community Speaks Out, um, they lost their money from the state. Um, Council Jacob did his homework, reached out to multiple organizations, and Community Speaks Out came to us, requested funds. And, um, so we are helping a local organization in Groton, um, and we are doing it in a, what I believe is a fiscally responsible manner. Um, and I will be in full support of this motion.
Thank you. Council Board along?
Uh, again, it was a request by a council, which I thank, Mr. Jacob. And I, I appreciate his due diligence to reach out to multiple agencies. But again, that But again, that does not bring them to the floor and the table. I believe it's the town's responsibility to put up a post and invite all nonprofits the fair and equitable opportunity to apply for these funds. Again, that's all I'm asking. And if they came to us requesting to, you know, for these funds, that's great, but we need to make sure, when we're seated with these monies, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and posting it. We can bring suggestions, that's one way, but it should still be posted so that other agencies have access. Working on a nonprofit board myself, a lot of the times, the way we find out about information is posts from other towns. They contact us directly and say, here's a date when we're going to be reviewing this, please apply. So, to blindly allocate funds without a process and say, if a council wants to bring a process forward, let's bring it forward, and that's the resolution that you're proposing, how about hold this policy, hold allocating this, because it's no rush, we're not delaying any funding to any agency, it's not even hit our coffers yet, we don't even know what we're getting. And I recommend a slowdown, be fiscally responsible, and let's get the money in hand, and while we're waiting for the money, let's set up a process. A simple post on a website saying Groton is going to be receiving three percent of the cannabis funds, we would like to keep it in-house in Groton, all agencies that service or are housed in Groton, please apply. Simple, doesn't cost a dime to do, doesn't even take time. But to blindly move forward, I feel is not giving any other agency a fair shot. I can contact an agency, but they don't have an application process. What do they do? Call the mayor and hope to get funded? There's no process in place. So, I just ask that we slow this down, and let's do it the right way. We just gave them funding, and that's already going to be hitting, and we got more funding coming in, and it's going to continue, let's spread it out. Because Community Speaks Out is one of the fillers of our agency. But they might be placing someone in a SCAD bed, or a detox home, or in the agency that I'm a part of. We get youth that are sexually trafficked and drug addicted by pimps throughout the community, from New York to Boston. We're in a transit location. There are areas that need this funding. Education or school prevention from marijuana, as I stated, as a mother of teenage boys, you know, the exposure that they tell me that they see is way different, it's more socially acceptable than it was when I was in school. So, parents have more of a concern, what is it being laced with, what are they doing, what are they, when you see someone vaping, you don't know what they're vaping, you don't know what's in there. And so, I feel education is key, and making sure we have the youth programs set up. And I think Community Speaks Out does a phenomenal job, and again, it's no disrespect to anybody that coordinates that agency. I feel this council needs to slow down, do its work, and fairly allocate these funds appropriately.
Counselor Westerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't be supporting this tonight, because I do not believe that it is fiscally responsible for us to allocate funds that we do not have a dollar amount. We don't have the money in hand, there's no rush to put it out there. By giving, by promising something that we don't have, I just don't feel comfortable doing that, so I will not be in support of this.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. In my opinion, Community Speaks Out is the best location for the first allocation of cannabis funds that are coming into our community. Whether it's twenty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, my personal opinion is, it should go to help people with addiction. It was read earlier tonight, all the different places we can spend this money on, streetscapes, neighborhood improvements in communities, educational programs for youth and training for, there's all these other options that we could send it to as well. But my opinion is, take care of the people that are helping. And it has been noted that this is an organization that does not, all the people that work for them are not collecting any kind of salary. This is all volunteer-based, and they do a lot for our community. They are on two-one-one. So, when I hear people, what I think are sort of chastising me for the way I voted, or for my thought process, as I guess you'd say, I would like to say, it is not the town's responsibility how we spend this, it is this council's responsibility how we spend this. And if a councillor wants the town to advertise it, it could have been brought up in an amended motion, and then it could have been voted on, and we could have directed the town to do so. But that's not what was hap, that didn't happen. So, I don't like to be chastised for such things when other people have these wonderful ideas, but they don't bring them forward.
Point of order?
I also, I did not point of order you when you did my motivations.
I just do, I would prefer, I stated my opinion.
I also think I'm physically responsible without complaining.
Counselor Board along, what's your point of order?
Using the word chastise, I find that highly inappropriate, that was not my intention. I'm voting the way that I choose, and the councillor has her opinion, so I ask that those comments stop. Thank you.
Okay. Keep comments just related to the agenda item, please. Thank you.
I also, I think I am very fiscally responsible when it comes to the town's money. And I would say that any town councillor on here who doesn't like what came forward, then they themselves should bring forward a policy, a suggested policy. Come up with an idea, request a committee, try and work on something, and do your homework. That is what I think, in my perception, is what I think Counselor Jacome did. He did his homework, he came with much education and educated the council with a lot of information and data, and I truly appreciate it, and I thank you, and I will fully support this.
Thank you.
Mayor, just to point out that councillor Parker rejoined us at eight-oh-four.
Okay. Thank you, eight-oh-four. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the cannabis tax revenue dispersment. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. So, that carries seven in favor, two opposed, six in, six in favor, two opposed. Westville Board along, and zero abstaining. Onto fire pilot fund distribution policy.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a resolution adopting the fire pilot fund distribution policy, resolved that the Town Council hereby adopt the fire pilot fund distribution policy. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, second by Board along. Counselor Board along?
It's my referral. Can I speak to my referral?
Sure. Counselor Franco.
Excuse me?
Counselor Franco.
Thank you. I brought before this referral over a year ago. I had witnessed in the community many residents in the Quanah Bridge area who were complaining about their mill raping so high. I had listened to them, I tried to find ways to help the best I could. I had reached out to Quanah Bridge Fire Department to come up with solutions. Previous councils have also discussed wanting to have an actual policy in place on how to distribute the state pilot funding. Because current, the way we had been doing it, there was no actual policy. It was in place, and it had just been being followed year after year after year. And so, we came up with a designed, I guess, spreadsheet. It's quite complex, but it does the job. It is, takes into consideration the assessed values within the different districts. It is equally and fairly distributed, and I believe the Town Manager will be describing each line item to go through this. And as was noted earlier, the Groton Fire Officers Association has written a letter, and they are in support of this. I was told by the Town Manager that the assessor, Mary Gardner, has reviewed this, she is also in support of this. She said it is fair, and she supports how it is, how it has been done, and she said it would be easy to, for her to continue it in future years. I would like to state that historically, pilot money has come in, the state pilot money has come in, and it's been divvied out to the fire districts to be split. I am, it has been recommended that we move this pilot money up to fifty percent, would go to the town, and fifty percent of the state pilot money would go to the fire districts. And the rationale behind that would be, when we have state property and there is an issue, who responds to that? It's not human services, it's not public works, it's not Parks and Rec, it is police, and it is our fire departments. So, I am in full favor of the fifty percent, because that police and fire, one would be the fire districts, and one would be town funding for the police there, is how it should be split. This also would help increase the funding that would go to certain districts, sort of substantially, because they have places such as, I'll wait for my second turn.
Thank you. Counselor Board along?
Thank you. I just want to thank Counselor Franco and the Chair, Counselor McBride, for leading this, as all councillors can't lead everything, so it takes team effort up here to get the job done. This is definitely something that was talked about on the RTM level, there wasn't much interest over the years. I for one, looked at houses in the Quanah Village area at one point, and I declined it because of the cost that I was going to be paying in the extra. So, I do think that it should be fair and equitable for all the folks. Many times, people in certain districts have been kind of, you know, said that, you know, oh, why don't they do this, you know, a lot of people can't afford to upkeep in certain areas, because their tax rate is so high in that area for, so, for their property. So, my question is, is, you know, I did watch all the meetings, and I've been following this very closely, what would this look like for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home that's assessed? What were they paying now, and under this new formula, what would that look like? Like, what would that, what would that savings happen for them? I'm trying to visualize that, that's my first question.
That's too broad a question to answer this way, you know, because it's total collected. I'd want to run, work it through with the, with our finance department, with any fire district.
So, I feel like there should be some more public outreach with this, because I do think that this, that's what the people want to hear, is what, how much is that going to save them? The people that are speaking up about this want to know, how much is that going to save them per year? So, if you just say, oh, we made a round number, we're not helping the community, and I think this is a wonderful number, I mean, I just, I think, you know, it would be nice to have those breakouts here before us, from the town side with our tax assessor here. It doesn't mean I'm not in support of this in any, any way, I think it's great, but to be able to speak to this, to the community, what are people saving by this new formula? What were they paying now, and what will this new rollout look like for them? And that was one of the questions that someone addressed me about, and I couldn't answer, because I didn't have the information. So, I wish it was kind of included, I, someone did reach out to me yesterday regarding this, and, but, the whole numbers, I, it just, I mean, can you break anything down to explain it? It doesn't mean I'm not in support, you know, I just want to make sure I'm able to understand what I'm voting on.
We might do, Mayor, would you like me to go through the policy?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I will go into the first page of the policy, I'll skip the purpose, I think that's been well-covered, as well as the background. So, I'm going to go on to priorities, and I first want to thank Chief Tim Driscoll for putting the core of the, of the spreadsheet together, and then David McBride, who did a lot of work on it, as well as the committee generally. One of the things I wanted is, they had a set of core priorities they wanted to accomplish as part of this policy through discussions. Priority one was mutual aid for fire districts that provide fire protection to other districts. They wanted to have some sort of recognition of that, which in this, in this formula is two thousand dollars per district that's providing that mutual aid. Priority two was trying to recoup fifty percent of the state revenue loss by the fire district. And you'll see these in action a little later. Priority three, reimbursing fire districts as much as they can through area, through the amount of state-owned land they have. Priority four is, with whatever's remaining left, take fifty percent of it and give to the Groton Fire Officers Association for their training and efforts. And then priority five, I'm sorry, priority four was fifty percent of it goes to distribute equally among remaining fire districts that weren't made whole previous. And then priority five is the remaining fifty percent of that balance, the last little bit of that balance going to the Fire Officers Association. Going into the actual formula itself, would you like me to, Mayor, would you like me to share a spreadsheet on the? Okay. Starting up here at the top, under the very first pilot state and taxes at line four-fifty-three, under, you'll, and then each of the councillors do have a large version of this to refer to. You will see at the top, the one slightly over one-point-five billion, that's our expected state pilot funds to receive, be received by the town this current FYE twenty-four. And then, as mentioned before, the goal is to, the, the policy is to provide fifty percent of that to the fire districts. So, half of the one-point-five and change would be a little over seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand in this example. Moving into, I'm going to look at, go under the column for BPFD for Quanah Bridge Fire Department as an example to go through. When you get down into that section, B, the state revenue loss, right after the name of the fire district, you'll see the, I should point here, sorry. Coming in through here, you'll see the taxes of state assessed value, so what the, how much value those actual state properties have. And then, as part of the process to figure out what the actual revenue loss is, you divide that, typical mill rate calculation, you divide that by a thousand, leading to this next line here, that two-oh-eight-eight-ninety-five, multiply that by the mill rate, in this case, the Quanah Bridge Fire District, five-point-one mill, equals state revenue loss of about one, one million seventy thousand and a little bit of change. Now, there are two municipalities that get MRS offset, and what that is, it's very similar to pilot dollars, it's not the exact same as our pilot, but there's a little bit that does go to two municipalities right now, seventy-two thousand eight-ninety-six to the City of Groton, you'll see right here, and then fifteen-seven-eight-two to Quanah Bridge. So, those, since they receive those funds, those get deducted from the revenue loss, since they did get a little bit of money. So, going into the revised revenue loss there under D, you'll see for each, for each district, how much actual state revenue they lost. And then dropping down, and I just want to point out, as we get down to the next fire, that pilot cap section, that you'll see in the second column, or third, fourth column, a couple of different things. One, let's start over here, if you see those letters on the side, E, F, G, and I should have pointed this out before, at the bottom of the spreadsheet that they correspond, you'll see explanations for each of those line items, and then it's also explained in the policy, the main part of the policy itself. So, it's kind of redundancy on explaining what's happening with that formula. And then you'll see under priority, which of those five priorities, like where they come into play as you go through this formula process. For each of these green light items, it's, it's the total of those to the right. And for example, under E, you have mutual aid payments, and if you recall, the mutual aid payments are two thousand each to those, those fire districts that provide mutual aid. So, totaling those ones that provided, together for each other, two thousand allocations, is fourteen thousand total under the green line item. Moving on is, that was priority one. Moving to priority two, if you recall, is recouping at least fifty percent of the revenue loss, the revised revenue loss. So, what we do is, we take, if you go back up to D and you see what the total revenue loss was, it's fifty percent of that going down into F, so fifty percent of the revenue loss. You combine those together, so Quanah Bridge Fire Department case, you have two thousand for mutual aid under E, you have five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-three-forty-two under fifty percent revised revenue loss, F, and that gives you the total, essentially the total allowable pilot reimbursement. So, it's to not go over fifty percent, the max would be fifty percent of what you've lost, and then if you have a mutual aid bonus at the top of that. So, that's how that works. So that's how that works. So, and so again, you see those totals under G. And that, all those together total 672,684, you'll see under G, under totals. That's how much each of those payment, initial payments for the fire allocations to fire districts total. That leaves out of that 50% at the top, that 753,000, once you deduct the 672,000, you're left with a little over, it's 80,433. So that's what you're down to at this point. Moving down next, because there's a few small districts that don't get much revenue, aren't out much revenue in the first place, those under 5,000 revenue get their mutual aid payment, but also instead of only getting 50% of their lost revenue, they get 100% of it. So again, those are for under 5,000 revenue loss. So you'll see under that I, if you go over, you'll see Mystic, 1,012 is, well, I'm sorry, just dropped, 3,000 under G. Sorry, lost it. So going under I, if you go under Mystic, you'll see that they're missing, let's see, you'll see the other 50% is, okay, so this is the other 50%. You saw up higher, 50% of the state revenue loss, but for the small ones, you'll get the other 50%. So the other 50% for Mystics, 1,012, for Noake, 707, for GLP, 720, for C, for Center Grotton, 643, and then $28 for Mumford Cove. So those ones are made whole. They get all their, they get their bonus for mutual aid as well as all their revenue loss from the state property taxes because it's easy to fulfill that. Moving on, that only totals 3,111, as you'll see in that green column under I. Redo, reduce, deduct, reducing that from, or deducting that from 80,433, leave 77,323. So that's what we have left right now. Going into the percent, and this gets us into step into priority three, making up for some of those, giving, giving a little weight in reimbursement to those that have more state-owned property. So for the municipalities that didn't fall under the, for the districts, the fire districts that didn't fall under the 5% or under missed out lost revenue, we take their percent, the percent of the total state land in the town, for example, in aquatic bridge fire, 72%, 73% of state land in the town falls within their district. So a lot, a huge chunk of the state lands in aquatic bridge fire district. So yeah, the three districts that didn't get made whole up higher, you have City Grotton, aquatic bridge fire department, and you have Old Mystic Fire Department. So if you take, for instance, aquatic bridge fire, again, if you take that 72.77% and multiply it by the remaining number, the 77,323, that gives you the 56 under, under L, it gives you the 56,26782, I should actually get rid of those fessle of places. So this helps on some of these districts that are out more revenue and also have a lot of state land. It reimburses some more towards them, trying to get them towards their 50% goal. Moving further down, once you make that payment of 63,000, that leaves 13,972. Half of that gets split equally among the three, three districts not made whole already. That's only 6,986. And then the final bit of change is 6,986. That goes to the fire, fire officer mutual aid, or the ground fire officer association's mutual aid fund essentially. So looking at those, that yellow column, this is how much gets paid out to the fire districts without that last little payment to the Fire Officers Association. So 746,131 total. So you'll see City Grotton, it's 126,277. For aquatic bridge fire, it's 587,939. For Mystic, it's 4,025. For Noake, it's 3,0414. And again, these will change by every year based on the, how much money we're receiving in the mill rates. Old Mystic Fire Department, 17,694. Ground Long Point, 3,441. Center Grotton, 3,286. And then Mumford Cove, 55. Now that orange at the bottom, the 753,117, if you notice, that totals back up to that original 50% of the total from the second number at the top, 753,117. That includes that 746,131 payment to the districts plus that 6,986 payment to the, the association. Now, another thing to bear in mind is there's also a town portion to this, so it'll be a little bit more added into this. This is for strictly the state revenue, the state pilot dollars. So this is the formula for distributing that. Moving back to the policy, moving into the, moving into the town funding, that's a little simpler. We traditionally, for many years, for a couple of decades at least, the town has put in 125,000 for reimbursement for town properties within fire districts. That hasn't changed at this point. The committee did not take that on, it was not part of the referral. But it wanted to be, we wanted reflected in the policy and it could always be updated at a future time. So the 125,000, you'll see looking at the chart on the screen there under the town fire district formula, you take the 125,000 and you look at what percentage of the town lands in each district, multiply that percent of area by the 125,000 and you get the town pilot payments. So it's a fairly simple formula there. So for instance, City Grotton, they have 8.63% of the town properties, town area in their district, multiply that by the 125,000 and you get 10,788. So that gets, those numbers there in that line, 10788, 628,950, et cetera, get added into the state fund to be our total pilot amount awarded in our budget. Now, in terms of the policy, if you look under the policy section, "The town manager shall use the enclosed formulas using the assessed values and mill rates existing as of January 1st of the current budget year to distribute payment in lieu of tax payments to the local fire districts through the town's annual budget process. Nothing in this policy shall prohibit the town council or representative town meeting from making changes to the expenditures." Because by charter, of course, the two bodies have the right to do what they want with the number. That's the overview.
So I guess, what I, and this explains the numbers, but what's the trickle-down effect, the bottom line of, you know, why overly, hold, heard overwhelmingly is the cost that aquatic bridge residents were paying? How will this policy change their pockets as far as what they're going to be needing back? How is these monies being allocated the way they are and increasing that? What is the end result of a consumer being the resident going to see?
So, can I attempt to answer? In our budget last year, we al- are you talking aquatic bridge? It's going to, first of all, it's going to be different for each fire district.
Right. I guess what my question is, is the goal, or what a lot of people reached out to me about was that, the goal of this was to help give relief to those, those taxpayers in that area.
Right. In our budget, we allocated 285,758 to aquatic bridge fire department. Under this plan, that would increase to 587,939. It's about a $300,000 increase.
And I guess how will that help, like, the taxpayers? So if they were paying X amount of dollars for $200,000 home, how will that affect them?
Well, I think the first question is, what's, how much is a one mill worth to, like, aquatic bridge fire?
Right, that's what I'm trying to understand. And then my next question is, this is the first read of this policy, and so it, again, tonight, everything we're voting on are things that we saw at the previous meeting. So as I just asked the town manager, is the structure different tonight for some reason?
Well, the, the town's rules, the council's rules allow for it to come out of a standing, a standing committee. And then I leave it up to the mayor. The mayor directed it to be on this.
Because it would just be nice, like all the things we voted on tonight, we, at the last meeting, worked through, and then we got to talk, comment on tonight. And so, I apologize for a lot of questions. This is the first chance we're presented with the full package. So we have, you know, definitely have to work through it. But I'd love to know what that percent per mill is, so we understand what this is going to do to the taxpayer.
Point of information?
Okay. Hold on, I have some, some numbers.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Would you like to invite the chief to the table?
Sure. If he'd like to come up.
Would the chief like to come to the table? To answer questions? Welcome.
Blue. I think.
Okay. So I'm doing, I'm just doing some math here. I have your budget up there. Total budget was 5,432,590. That equated to a 5.1 mill rate. So that is 1,065,000 about equaling a mill. So an increase of about $300,000 should be an increase of, a decrease of .3 mills.
And just to note, prior to us increasing the amounts for this year's budget, what we had been traditionally using prior to this year, it's a $500,000 increase from that. So, you know, so a pretty good difference.
Right.
And then it's also hard, by the time we actually use this for the 25 budget, you know, there could be some, there'll be other things happening with our revenues too, you know, for, you know, for the town. So, you know, a lot of factors could come into play by the time you actually use this.
So we won't be using this until 2025? Is that what you suggested?
Because the budget process is done for '24, yeah.
Do you have questions?
I guess that's my question. So what would that look like in raw numbers for the residents? I mean, I guess, this is the first read, if it's not being implemented in 2025, I just want to make sure that we, I have enough education to be able to educate the community of what that's going to look like for a property owner. So you're getting .3 mill?
Okay. Yes. Counselor's time has expired.
Can I get that question answered?
Yes, it's .3 mills. That's what I've calculated.
That's what you have, John?
Yeah, if you count this year's '24 to the next, yes. So if you had a $200,000 house assessed value, it'd be like a $66-ish savings for aquatic bridge fire.
$66?
And each one would be different?
Per, per year?
For that year. For a $200,000 house.
Good.
I ran out of time.
Yep. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town manager, just for the, for residents, can you just, just give us a couple examples of what state property is in, I don't know, aquatic plains and maybe the city of Grotton, just so people know what we're talking about?
Well, he'd be more ideal, but it could be throughout the town. It could be anything like Bluff Point, for instance, Yukon, there's, you know, a variety of other state-owned properties.
So because those properties are tax exempt?
Yeah, they're tax exempt.
Yeah, they're tax exempt.
Aquatic Bridge, Grotton, Western Airport, National, Air National Park, Bluff Point, Candlewood Hill, Wildlife Management, Haley Farm. Those are the, the biggest ones.
Those are good. Yeah, no, I just want a couple examples so people can know kind of what we're talking about.
For the record, the airport had a fire department and that's been closed off for over 30 years. So we have full protection for the airport.
And does the, like, Grotton Utilities Reservoir and thing also?
Grotton Utilities, we actually have 1.2 square miles of, but that's not part of this.
Chief, just pull the mic over.
I'm sorry. Yes, we have city of Grotton properties, but that's not part of what the discussion is. The policies on state and town-owned properties only, unfortunately.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was just trying to have an example of just a couple, so people know what we're, we're talking about. And then on the town property, it's things like schools, town hall, probably, things like that.
Under, we own town, it wouldn't fall under the state pilot, the town halls, that's ours, yeah.
It just falls under the town. You brought it up town, so it's just the town stuff.
Now, of course, Grasshaw Tech falls under the state property.
Okay, okay.
Just since 2002, Town Hall Annex, Town Senior Center, Dogtown, the major additions to Fitch Senior High School, Catherine Kalanowski School, Fitch Middle School, Aquatic Plains Park, Cobb Family Park, the Sheep Farm, Sheep Farm South, Merritt Family Forest, Waltz Woods, all those fall within the aquatic bridge fire district. All those have been taken off of our rolls.
Okay. All right, that's cool. I just want to thank the, the chiefs, the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Franco, Counselor McBride. I think just watching the meetings and watching the processes this went through, I think it was a great collaborative effort on a lot of different people to come up with a really nice solution. It's, you know, it's something that we can now use to build on and to go forward with, and I think you guys did a great job. And I just, I support this, you know, whatever night we vote on it, but I think you did, guys did a really fabulous job in just working together. And I appreciate the letter from the chiefs to the committee and to the council, it was a great, it was nice just to show the support, unified support from, from everybody. I think that helps also, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Guyeston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank the chief for his willingness to work with the Public Safety Committee and being part of the process to hammer out this policy. It is, your residents, I'm sure, will thank you for helping them save a little bit of money in their tax dollars. And I do also want to commend all members of the committee for their excellent work in drafting this policy, creating a process, and I am glad that it will be enacted for fiscal year 2025. I will be in full support, and thank you for all the work, you and your firefighters too, for our community.
Mayor, just to point out that Counselor McBride has arrived.
Thank you. It's 8:37.
And he may have arrived earlier, but we're in presentation mode, so I can't say for certain.
Okay.
Up 10 minutes, he says. So 8:27.
8:27, thank you. Counselor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I'm in full support as well. I appreciate the spreadsheet and I appreciate, you know, Counselor Franco for bringing us the referral and Counselor McBride working on it and the chiefs and just bringing all the stakeholders to the table. I think that was the biggest thing, especially how we did certify copy. We did the best we could to reach out to all the departments. So thank you and I'll be supportive of this. Thank you.
Counselor Board along?
Thank you. I just didn't know if Counselor McBride, before I ask questions, might, does he have anything he wants to add to this that maybe we didn't hear before I asked my final question?
Well, you have the floor right now.
I just wanted to ask Counselor McBride if there's anything else that he may want to, that's my first question.
If he has something to add, he'll raise his hand, I'm sure.
I was just asking if there was something I could ask through you.
You can ask questions.
Sure. Just, is there anything else that hasn't been said or anything about the savings for the residents or anything since you've been working on this that you might want to add to this?
Is that for me? I believe, I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. I missed the beginning. Like I said, I only arrived 10 minutes earlier, so I'm not sure of the full presentation. But I, I do want to say it is a, it's a good, it's a shift of, of revenues from throughout the town to the areas that need them the most. And I think it's very equitable. I think the committee did a fantastic job, the councilors as well as, as the fire department and the fire individuals. So it's, I think it's something that's fair, it's equitable, it's needed, and it was discussed in many different variations. But it is, it is a savings for the aquatic bridge residents and some of the other districts. So I think it's, I'm in full support of it, obviously. And I think it's, it will be very beneficial and it will be a savings on, on their taxes. So I'm in full support of it. And again, just want to thank everyone for all the due diligence they did.
Okay. Still your time.
Thank you. I just want to thank Counselor McBride for commenting on that. I'm excited to hear that there is a savings. If it is true that $66 a year for 200,000, if that, you know, it'll be interesting to see, Town Manager Burke, will there be another presentation after we vote for this where you'll bring your financial director and, and kind of work through this with the council since this is the first read? Or when will we have, like, final numbers on this?
Well, I think we actually, I mean, you're wanting, like, maybe what we just did for aquatic bridge for each district? Or?
I mean, I guess, like you said, you didn't have the numbers to exactly go over everything and you didn't have to reach out?
We did work through the numbers though, yeah, in terms of aquatic bridge.
I'm sorry?
We did end up working through the numbers though and gave you, you know.
All right. So those numbers are pretty accurate.
So like for aquatic bridge, just thinking, again, next year, we had more state revenue last year, but if, so if we end up getting 2.5 million, it'll increase. So we're just talking a static 1.5 million for this year. So essentially, aquatic bridge, you're, you're saving approximately, from the '24 budget, if we were to assume all same factors to the '25, it'd be about $33 per 100,000. So essentially, in Paquonic Bridge, you're saving approximately, from the '24 budget, if we were to assume all same factors to the '25, it'd be about $33 per $100,000 of assessed value.
And that's per year?
Correct. It'll change from year to year.
Not a month, they're saving.
Mill rate is always per year.
Yes, I'm just making sure.
Can I just make one comment about the mill rate that you're asking? Paquonic Bridge is an anomaly because we can only tax 45% of our fire district. A majority of our fire district is owned by the state of Connecticut, and then second by the town of Groton. So the $587,000 that we're making up on the state for any other fire district would be phenomenal. The problem is that Paquonic Bridge is still not collecting 611,334.30 from the town of Groton. So if we were to get more money from the town of Groton, then our mill rate would go down even more. And if we could throw the City of Groton on top of that, on all the free services that we have to give to them, my mill rate would be below or equal to all the other fire district mill rates. And I have 20 full-time firefighters, a fire marshal, a fire inspector, deputy chief, a fire chief. We would be the same as all the other fire districts. I'll put my budget against anybody's. That's what I'm battling. I'm battling 1.78 million dollar loss every single year. That would be the equivalent of the town of Groton losing EB and Pfizer off their grant list.
No, I respect that, and I've known Jeff since he was an EMT back in the day. So I mean, I really respect what you guys do. I've known Jeff for over 20-something years. And, you know, it's unfortunate. And I guess my question to the town manager, how come we're not providing more resources to Paquonic Bridge outside of this to help with the costs since a lot of our land falls within that jurisdiction?
You could ask yourself that, since the councils can set that themselves, so.
I'm asking in general, is it something that has to be driven by the council, or is that something?
Yes, it is, has to be driven by the council, and part of what we're doing right now is rectifying that situation as we speak.
But as you stated, more could come. So if the town decided, that's what I'm asking the town manager, could we set aside more money to, on top of this, to go when we are looking at our budget season?
This passes today. I'm clicking my heels that I just, we just made a bolder move. Next, in fairness to the town, me, Paquonic Bridge, I want my money now. But in fairness to the town, I'll take this. And in a few years, because it wouldn't be fair to try and change what's been horrible like that. It's not fair to the town.
And the council, of course, can provide whatever funding they want to them. Doing it for town property, obviously, then you collect more taxes. You collect those taxes town-wide.
Yeah. No, I'm just asking as a, as a full effect, and I think this has been something that's needed to be done for a while. I mean, and hopefully this will bring some relief to the taxpayers. I appreciate all the effort that you do and respect everything that you do for our community to keep us safe. And I think it should be fair and equitable. You do reach out, and I wish it was more fair from the city side to the town, you know, side. But just appreciate your efforts staying strong with this and keep pushing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I would like to thank you for all that you have done to help with this referral and meeting with me and discussing a lot of the finances that go into this calculation prior to us even bringing it to the Public Safety Committee. I would like to thank all the fire chiefs that showed up at our meeting and when we had a discussion on this. And I also have spoken, and I don't want to speak for him, but I had spoken to the mayor of the city. And he is good with this calculation as well, and has no issues with it.
Just mentioned, I did speak with him also.
Okay, and you concur?
Yes.
I think when we historically have given 18% of our state budget money to the fire districts to split, it was a very small piece of the pie. I think going up to 50% is reasonable. It's equitable between fire and police who share the responsibility to respond to these sites. And I'm really happy that we came up with a very good plan. It was very respectful meetings. It worked very, we worked very quickly. And I thank Counselor McBride for chairing this, the committee, and making sure that this was brought forward. And I hope that this can pass tonight, and we give some relief to some of the residents in the Paquonic Bridge District, which I think they have been very upset about for quite some time. As long as I've been in office, I've been hearing them, even when I've stood in line at the tax window at the town hall. I have heard people talk about why is their district mill rate different than others, and the big complicated story that goes behind that. So I appreciate us all coming together, and I hope in the future, we can work together with the fire departments on other issues that I know we can work on, and come together with some wonderful solutions for our whole community. And as noted, it is our counselor's responsibility, when we do the budget, we allocate this money every year to you. And year after year, counselors have complained about this. And I'm so glad we have finally come up with a good policy that solves the state issue, which is the bulk of the money that goes towards the fire districts. So if anybody else would like to come forward with working on the town policy in the near future, I would be happy to work on that. And I also look forward to potentially working on what we can do about the training center as well. So thank you for everything.
Seeing no further discussion, I will then call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Repose, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second. Jacome?
Motion to adjourn by Counselor Franco, seconded by Jacome. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.